We obviously have an elections official here now, you know. And I really wanna just have open discussion about it, but I asked Beth to give us, to bring the job description. You can sit up front. You can lead the talk.
No.
We've all heard from my constituents, we know this is coming back to the council, and I just think we should have some open conversation about it. And not to sway anybody one way or another, but just to look at the job description and 'cause I think there's a lot of thought that, you know, either way we go, or we're not having any control if we do this or do that, that's not true. You know, job descriptions are job descriptions, and we should be looking at them, and if we see something we wanna look at, talk about, we should be doing that. That's all, it's really an open discussion.
Yeah, that's the same draft that you received previously, I think it was back in October, when we started preliminary discussions.
So the red represents what we wanna add to it, and what's a dark gray?
Yeah, red is the additions, and then, well actually, I think those are second additions, but shaded were additions, initial additions, and then anything that has a strike through in it would be supposed to eliminate.
That's what we, you know, we've seen before, but I just wanna put it out in front of anybody, and it's really an open discussion, and it's, it can be ten minutes, it can be whatever you want, and I just wanna, you know, want you guys to have, you know, we can't all sit together and leave, so we can't really, really open discuss this less than council, you know, so let's, let's discuss it tonight. Thoughts, you know, what you're hearing, or anything, anything that's on your mind about this topic.
As far as the qualifications, or as far as the requirements, is that what you're asking, or are you asking about whether we would prefer someone being elected to this position or something?
I don't, I don't agree with that. I think what I wanna do is clarify, I've heard, and I haven't talked to everybody, 'cause we can't, obviously, you know, we can't all just sit and talk, but I'm hearing a lot from constituents, my own in my own district, that, oh, well, if you do this, you, you know, if you make it appointed, or whatever, you, you know, you lose all this control, and we've all heard that, I'm sure we have. And I, I don't, I don't think a job, you know, if you do a job description, and you do the things right, I don't see where you lose all that, so. I'm just throwing it out there for everybody to look at and talk about, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to, you can voice your opinions, certainly, it's an open session here, I mean, we're not on, I think we're on TV, are we?
He reported it.
I just, okay. But it's, that's, that's what I wanna have meeting for, and then, you know, I obviously wanna have Kurt in his group present too.
Well, I have a concern, I voted to have it appointed at the time we had the meeting, and I guess my concern was, I guess I'm concerned about control. If the city clerk's office, for example, I'm trying to come up with some examples, but let's say closes their office at noon on a regular basis, and that's a time where a person could go in and do, fill out forms or whatever they have business during their lunch hour, so then, their inconvenience and so forth, and who has control over that? The city clerk, as a separate entity, can just do that, and, or like, for example, if the city clerk's absent for a period of time, who, who goes over and talks to the city clerk? We could talk to the city clerk, we could talk to the city clerk, but there's no control over that. But if it's appointed, and you have rigorous job description, and you have a bigger pool of candidates because you can go outside of the city, you could get a qualified candidate that if there's something that needs to be addressed, can be addressed by the common council, alter persons, or the mayor through that process. But I have had calls saying they wish that it would be elected, because it, then the city, the tax, the electorate adds voice into that position, so I've had pushback, not pushback, I had that input, and I appreciate that. But after sharing why, why I thought it would be good for appointed, they could understand that. So it sounded like one way is good or bad, it's just that logic of how people perceive it, and that I told them I didn't want to not honor the vote, I think it was in 2009, whatever that vote was. In fact, I voted to have it elected position, because I didn't know what the city clerk's position was. I walked in at the time, should it be elected, and I said, sure. But now knowing the role of the city clerk, which is basically, in my mind, an administrative management, bookkeeping type of position, awfully close to the assistant, to the mayor position, and that, and we hired that person, to me, it's almost the same type of tasks, if you look through what they, what he or she would have to do. And so that's where I'm thinking, they don't vote for any ordinances, they don't vote for anything with regard to the budget, they don't vote, there's no voting detail, but it's more management, and that's where I'm coming from, right or wrong, but that's where I have my thought process, so.
I would reiterate all of that, when I see a position such as a human resource director or public works director, fire chief, police chief, all these positions that the city council appoints with the mayor's direction, these are very highly skilled, highly qualified positions that generally have quite a lot of educational background. When I see the city clerk's position not being necessarily anything having to do with policy decisions, and the history of the election process with the city clerk's position, to me, it looks like a one-person beauty contest, and generally, when that one person runs, that's the person that gets elected, or elected, but that does not necessarily give the Wisconsin Rapid Citizens the best person in that position. So I am very much in favor of the city council utilizing its authority that the citizens gave us to put the best person in that position. When you have one person on the ballot, that is not always the best person for the job, and I also would say, when it is an elected position, I think there might be people that are very highly qualified, that might be younger, looking for some stability in their housing and with their families, that don't want that election cycle coming up every few years, they want something that they say, if I do a good job, I'm gonna be here forever, you know, I'm going to make sure that the citizens are, and, and this council and the city staff are treated and are given the best effort that I have, so, treated well, given the best effort I have. That's my position on it.
Any else, Todd?
I think you all know what my position is, and it hasn't changed, but, in that, stay, I guess, with the elected position, but I think just, again, that if it's an appointee from whoever the mayor may be, is that then what keeps a future mayor from making a change who they want to be in? That does not, that I see it, that that person, I'm looking for that to stay, no matter what job you're doing, good, bad, or indifferent, whatever we wanna say. Whoever the mayor is wants, if they would want somebody else to appoint to that position, can do that, and I hate to say it, but I don't know that I've seen a council yet that would reject what the mayor, a mayor, would put out there as an appointee. I would have to, in all my years of being on, and I could be wrong, maybe some would have researched back of appointees being rejected, and so I guess what I'm saying is that there could be, with changes of mayors, could be changes in the clerk's position. Granted, and I'm not gonna argue that times have changed in, maybe what the rules all are, to use the word, to use a word of rules, of what has changed legality or whatever, but how many clerks has the city gone through in the last forty years? How many?
Point taken, I mean.
And they've been elected, and they've been elected.
Well.
And, and of course, times have changed, but we've also had two and a half months now, since we've had notification of the clerk resigning, and we're sitting at this point now, again, three months, almost three months, almost three months ago.
I would argue part of that's, part of that's our issue. The person that resigned, Steve said they were gonna work till December 18th, right? Right?
Granted, but with that.
I'm not picking on the person, but I'm saying we would have something sort of.
But with that though, okay, but with that though, even, say, say somebody said, I'm gonna resign two months from now, okay, here's my notice, I'm gonna continue to work.
I think that's what happened, right?
But somebody could be.
I'm not arguing with you.
Okay, we could, we could have found a way, in the meantime, to have somebody in there to.
Well, I think we probably did.
Well, the clerk can't be appointed until the vacancy happens.
Right, and it was December 18th.
So I could not have hired a clerk until December 18th.
The council accepted that resignation, you know, you can't blame us on Mr. Blazer or anybody, we accepted it December 18th, and we said, we'll call him a, and as long as we're on that point, how many, how many of us have talked to the clerk since he resigned, and asked about anything?
I have.
Okay, so, so we, if you have called him, the clerk, they've answered my questions. We also, and I'm still torn on this issue, Tom, so I'm not telling you, I'm, I'm listening to my constituents, to be honest with you right now.
And I've heard that from my constituents, what you said, just to be honest.
But, but my point with the job description, and Todd will let you talk in a second, but my point in the job description was, we're saying, you know, there's no control even if you elect, I mean, I'm an elected official, I, I don't know, I come to all the meetings 'cause I feel it's an obligation, there's gotta be some control you can have on a clerk who's making sixty-three thousand dollars a year, there's gotta be some control, if we can't have it, then we gotta look at the job description, the pay scale, everything, that, in my, in my estimation. Todd?
I would say with, with an appointed position, this is not necessarily, this is not, not even, not necessarily, it's not the mayor's best buddy or whatever, people will go through a vetting process, an interview process, and collaboration of different steps to choose the right person, then it would be put in front of the council, not just, not just one person, so, when that person is appointed, and I would assume Beth goes through maybe a job evaluation, maybe annually, I would assume a lot of our city staff does, you know, to, if we have some deficiencies, then that can be addressed. In a, in an elected position, you have no control at all, I mean, you have none, so.
But, but my point there was, we're all elected, I mean, aside from somebody that's got our, we're all here, right?
But you're not full-time officers.
Well, that's true.
And it's a huge difference.
When one of us is gone, like, one of us is gone right now, this body can still function.
Right.
Okay? When that city clerk is gone, that cannot function.
We didn't function in the last month, in this, on this exact issue, because two people were absent, and the council didn't have the guts to take action, other than one person.
I think we need.
People wanted us to hold it off because two people were absent.
Okay.
I didn't think we had to hold it over because of that. So obviously, this council could not function missing people, and I actually have a hard time with that, that we can take any action, that we should take any action when anybody is absent, on any issue. I don't care how trivial somebody may think it is.
I think, there's no triviality, just 'cause they're important to somebody, so.
Right, but that is right, some may think it's trivial.
And some may have thought, oh, we're not giving that issue.
No, no, okay, but I, I think that.
I think this one was big enough to have a full council there. This, okay, this is a big issue, right? We're all hearing from our constituents about it.
But if we don't, what if, what if somebody's missing again? Are we gonna automatically then hold it over?
I think the reason, I think the reason actually was not taken in previous meetings is because we needed a unanimous.
No.
Yeah, I think, but, you know.
Do you need unanimous, you needed unanimous that night because only six were there.
Right, you need six.
Right, you would need six votes, but the body, you guys, the body determined that you wanted to hold it over.
Right, right.
You'd have to do it all the time, so that's a majority vote.
But the unanimous is not that, other than that night because only six were present.
No, no, you would need, you would need six to have a forum, to have a meeting, to have a vote, and you would have needed all six of those to vote in favor in order to pass the charter ordinance, yes, that's correct.
So, so you didn't need a unanimous vote to pass it the first time, first reading?
Well, oh, at the first reading, yes, your rules provide that, that every ordinance has a first reading, which implies that there's a reading, and then it comes back for a passage, but then you changed, you, a few years ago, you said, well, but we'll allow ordinances to go, to be passed at the first meeting if everyone agrees, and there's no dissent, that could pass. So you had your first reading, you had a vote, it wasn't unanimous, it didn't really even matter what the vote was, it didn't pass the threshold of being passed, so it was considered the first reading, and now you're waiting for your, you know, the vote, and that is assumed to occur at your next meeting, you know, provided that you all agree.
I wouldn't say it's assumed to occur. Well, I mean, my point on bringing it up, 'cause, believe me, in no way, shape, or form am I gonna pick on any former clerk, because when I called, I got my answers, so I'm not gonna sit here in front of anybody and say, whenever that person resigned or whatever, when I called, I got my answers, okay, or maybe I had to go to sue, you know, the assistant or whatever, but I got my answers, so, to say, to say you had no use of a clerk for two and a half months, I think that's, you know, the clerk wasn't at the meetings on Tuesdays, but I think that's a little pretentious to say we didn't have the use, 'cause anytime I called, Mr. Blazer answered me, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, and we're not discussing this because of, of the past clerk, we're discussing it because he resigned, and this is the opportunity, if we were to change, to take that change.
But we're saying we don't have control the other way, you do have control, you know, with elected officials, I think you could put some.
I'll be really blunt, I don't think the council has, if there truly was a performance issue, where somebody wasn't performing the duties, I have a hard time believing the council would remove that person from office. I'm gonna be very direct.
Really?
And that's no disrespect to the body, but I, I have a real tough belief that that person would be removed from office.
Oh, you haven't had that, right? So, or haven't.
But your point, Terry, though, is, is that you don't have, that you have control, and by basing the selection in the voter's hands, you're trying to, you're trying to make a, you're stretching the point that you, that the council still has the control in elected capacity, and it requires removal of office, suit majority, sue, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not saying control, we can get rid of somebody, I'm saying, we have a job description, we can not.
How can you hold them accountable to not perform?
You can't say you gotta be in office certain times or nothing? Nothing at all?
Well, we would, you say that the office needs to be open from eight to five, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the city clerk needs to be in there from eight to five, the office has to be open, so.
Somebody has to be in there.
Well.
The assistant.
Of course, open.
To, to your point.
I mean, there's an example, it's a, it's a clear example.
And I'm bringing these points up, 'cause if this is being taken, the public needs to know that if they wanna keep calling and saying they wanna know, to be in an elected position, this is what.
But if there's a performance issue that the council thinks that, that they should address, or they attempt to address it, and the city clerk still says, okay, fine, I'm, I'm still not gonna honor it, you know, at some point, you're gonna have to take action to, to hold that person accountable, so I guess to the mayor's point, the removal of office, yeah, that's probably what the bottom line would be to, to hold that person accountable. It's pretty extreme.
I just wanna address something that Tom said about a new mayor coming in, the clerk was considered a department head position, just like Beth is, and Tim and Joe, the new guy.
Joe, Joe.
And, and those positions are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, and by statute, those, those positions can only be removed really for cause, or by basically a two-thirds vote of the council, so it's, a new mayor can't come in and just say, I want someone else. It's kind of presumed that those positions are gonna continue, you know, unless there's an issue in the council, or the entire, or two-thirds of the council wants to remove them. For an elected official, it's kind of, it's the same, a common council can remove someone for cause, an elected official for cause, so, and then there's also the recall procedures. I, I hesitate to whether I should say this or not.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think, the whole elected versus, versus appointed, I mean, I'm actually the only elected professional position that remains, remains now, but, and I personally think the position should be appointed, so I'm kind of speaking against my self-interests here somewhat. There used to be perks for being elected, there was a little bit more in your insure, in your retirement, there was a better retirement benefit at the end, but that's all gone away, so we're treated pretty much like general employees now, instead of elected getting something extra, and I think, and the statutes say, I mean, a lot of, some elected officials feel, well, I'm elected by the people, I report to the people. I don't agree with that, I think, I mean, I'm talking about professional positions like clerk, or attorney, or the former treasurer, we are, we are in statutes, we are officers of the corporation, so we have a, just like I'm in-house, I think of myself as in-house council for the city, I report to the city, if someone constituent calls up, I, I can't represent them, or they can't really tell me what to do, my allegiance is to the city. It's the same way with the clerk, it's a, it's a procedural administrative position for the city, he or she owes their allegiance to the city, it's not, so this whole political thing of that the people, I mean, I don't, I don't really get that, I don't, certainly don't see that in my position, I don't see that in the clerk's position, or in any of the previous positions, the allegiances to the city, not, and, and the elected versus appointed, that's just the manner of choosing, once, once that's decided, I, I, I feel that I should be treated just like everyone else. The only caveat is, because you're elected, and it's the same with you guys as alter persons, I mean, we can't, there's no personnel policies that apply to you, like you have to, you know, show up from eight to four, or you have to, you know, I mean, what are the host of other, and likewise, those really don't apply to elected officials, I don't get vacation, I don't get sick days, but I'm expected to.
That's why you're here right now, right?
Yeah, I'm expected to be at work, I'm expected to get my job done, and I guess if I wasn't doing that, I would totally expect to be treated just like any other department head, and maybe for cause, you would, you would say, hey, you're not showing up at work, you're not doing your job, and I guess I don't see any, and especially with the way that it's, that's a two-thirds majority to get rid of a department head, it's, I mean, I, it's pretty much the same way for, for an elected official to be removed by the council, so in a way, you know, it's kind of the same.
Well, just so we're on record here, we're not looking to get rid of anybody, so, but we kind of, we kind of are on a path that, I understand.
And, and I know that I, that's a different viewpoint than maybe other people that have been in elected positions, I mean, if the mayor asks me to do something, I'm not gonna say, well, you know, I'm not gonna do it. I, I think, I, I think I'm a department head just like everyone else, and I'm, I wanna be part of that team, and that's.
And I wanna go back on the record and saying, you know, I said, if we really feel something about this and that, you can always look at the wage, that wage of a clerk is in line with a clerk in this, you know, in other cities, so that wage is a lot extrapolated, so. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be quoted as saying we should downgrade the clerk's pay, I don't, I don't agree with that, that pay is reasonable with, with being paid.
Maybe, maybe Beth could share two similar municipalities in the state, whether their position clerk is appointed or elected.
Yeah, I think the survey that I did, I guess it was back in October, maybe, a hundred and seventy-six are appointed, and thirteen are elected throughout the state.
Thank you.
I would add one resource on that note, because I did some personal conversations in calling, particularly with the municipalities that have struggled with this more recently, because I think it's a, it's a more recent trend, as clerks have retired, as they've resigned, as they've left for other, they vacated the position, that municipalities have looked at, or debated really, the elected versus appointed. One really good, close example is the city of Marshfield, Steve Barr, the administrator, will have a conversation with you, he's very approachable, and he really talked about the pros and cons, the debate their council had, I don't believe, if I'm not mistaken, it wasn't controversial there, it was, it was actually an unanimous change, but they didn't, the clerk actually retained the position after, it was, it was interesting why they, why they did it, when they did it, I'm not exactly certain, but that would be a good conversation for any of you that wish to have further discussion, or still open-minded about sort of the debate, I would have, I would call Steve, there may be others in your survey that Beth has done, that she might be able to point you to, you know, even those that have, have debated it and not changed, I mean, I think it's important to have the thoughts of other municipalities, pull ourselves out of who has served, and I, you know, I'm sick of hearing anybody's names, because this isn't about anybody, right?
No, it's about the position.
It's about the position, and so I think at some level, we have to remove the personality out of it, and we're so far removed from having a city clerk anyway, that we shouldn't even be mentioning his name, so we should be looking for the, for the real factual, and I guess maybe to Terry's point, having the meeting tonight, is what's the innuendo? What's the concern, the fear, the reasons that you've heard from the public, 'cause I, I haven't heard a lot, you know, why one way or the other, I think that's an important question that has been sort of asked tonight, and I think that's a question that should still be asked, so let's see innuendo, what's the, what are you hearing, what are the fears, and let's talk about those, let's address them.
Because the real, and this was, this meeting was gonna probably be a obstacle, but we just couldn't get it together, but the real issue here is, when we come back to the next council meeting, this is gonna be a, so, we're gonna be talking about it, we're gonna be voting, so, I just wanted to get this.
The only thing I've, the only thing I've heard from a person is that, even if we, if it stays elected or appointed, if it's gonna be elected, it's not gonna be elected for, what, two more years?
Right.
So, so we, we, we do have to appoint somebody, right?
Right.
So, whether or not we do this as an elected or appointed position, we still have to appoint somebody for the next two years.
Yeah.
And so why can't that be done now? And their, their point was, why can't that be done, and this debate go on for a little, whatever, if you need to debate it.
But it must be, it needs to be appointed, no matter what.
Right, but it goes for the qualifications of the person you choose, if, if it's gonna be, if you wanna appoint someone now, the status quo is elected, that person has to live in the city, and I think that, that was, you know, somewhat of it, like, who, who's the pool of, what are the pool of applicants that we're looking at, you know, what are the qualifications basically for the job, so, and that's, that's correct, that if you appoint someone in the city, but once that, once that person is appointed, they're fulfilling the remainder of, of term.
Term.
Right, and then I guess that would allow you to decide later.
What is, if, if it were, if it were appointment for an elected position versus an appointment for an appointment, appointed position, is the vetting process different?
Well, the mayor's gonna, would appoint, or the remainder of the term, and the council would confirm, right?
Right.
So I guess it would be in how you wanna go about that appointment, my guess is that we would do what we did for the elections coordinator in terms of advertising and interviewing, I'm assuming that's what we would wanna do. Right.
It would be the same.
Be the same either.
Right, that's, that was my question, is, is would the process, would the process be the same?
I think that's been Terry's, Terry's brought that up a couple of times, that in either case, if you walk down the path of appointed versus elected, let's understand the subsequent steps, let's get over to sort of the reasons for it, or why, and let's just walk down the path. That there would be that same vetting process, or very similar, if we're gonna post and advertise, screen, and then obviously the, the post-employment. Now, if it's elected, I don't know if you can put them through the drug screening, I mean, I don't know what sort of, you know, you wouldn't, right?
No, and there's no qualifications, so you can't put qualifications in the job description if it's elected.
Right.
There's no qualifications in that job description, since.
You don't need any.
Well, but you.
Well, you, if it's appointed.
I could choose to.
That would be important to him, but technically, yeah, as long as that person is a resident of this, an adult resident of the city.
It's really the only qualification, right, they're a legal citizen, and they're a resident.
And, and that's, that, I guess that was part of my question is, is if, if it were an appointed, elected position, would that process be because that's what the mayor would request? I mean, really, if I understand it correctly, if the decision is that it's going to be an elected position, the vetting process wouldn't have to take place.
That's really up to him.
Right, right.
I, I mean, and the council's gonna have to approve the appointment, so.
Right.
I mean, he does have to do it that way.
Yeah, right.
I had a thought.
Well, I'm glad we vetted that all.
I just had a thought.
Here's one of the, one of the, the, the main concern from the citizens of the community is, I feel that it's a, it's a loss of power. Because they wanna be able to make that decision, but back to what you're saying, you know, how would that help us out if that person shows up, gets in, because they're elected in, without any qualification, now, now what? You know, we don't, we don't know down the road whether they will have the qualification to, to do the job or not, and then, you know, that's four, five, six months down the road, and then what?
Yeah, and I'll be the devil's advocate, as I always am, of course, but I, I wasn't, and I'm still not, but I wasn't the best manager twenty years ago, or ten years ago. But I learned as I went on, and you can gain experience, I don't wanna pick on you, over here, you know, your friend got it. So, I mean, you know, and, and I don't wanna pick on names, or, but that position, that clerk position's been manned very heavily for the last, I don't know, thirty, forty years, whatever it's been, but thirty years, I would say, in this, in this city, so. Jimmy Betterell hasn't been manned.
Probably sued correctly, just like the mayor's position and yours, there's a minimum of two hundred votes, uh, two hundred signatures required.
Right, to, for an election, for nominating, nomination papers, right.
To place your name on the, on the paper, on the nomination for, for a clerk, like you per.
Right.
Okay, and the mayor, for the mayor's position. In the, in the period of time that you think about it, you've gotta get out there and circulate twenty, twenty nomination papers. And then the clerk's office has to verify that those are indeed proper electors. I, I think a person, just to do that, shows good intent, and that they would follow up with what is asked of them. I mean, there was Bob Boyarsky, Vern Worth, and Shane, each of them needed to do that in order to serve. And a good friend of mine ran for county clerk one time, he did, he did witness election, but still, he was a small businessman. I, I think you would see a person who would like to serve as a clerk as a responsible person. Because you have roughly five weeks from the first of December to the, in this case, tonight, to circulate those papers, get in front of people, or have a friend work with you, or even a small committee to work with you to circulate those papers. So I don't believe we would not get someone who is interested in the position if we maintained it as an elected position. I'm not gonna get too much, because of what happened last time.
Glad to have you back.
Yeah, we don't, I'm not gonna get you, you know. This is my fault, I just want you to remember the time's gone, Jeremy, though. Glad you took these guys. Okay, so I mean, it's just a discussion, I, I.
Maybe I could add a couple, go ahead, are you closing the discussion?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna add, what have I heard, you know, in terms of fears or concerns, that was kind of raised? I think there's a general fear that, because the, the position of clerk has evolved so much from when its inception, you know, in the role of governments, that the clerk's role is so much more professional, that the position requires a certain level of expertise and knowledge. They may not have it coming into it, to Terry's point, that they've become a better manager as time goes on, of course, but even in the election specialist position, in ensuring that that person have the appropriate training, skills, and qualifications is a feat, because there is a certification, there's a sort of, there's a certificate to be municipal clerk. I mean, you can't screw elections up, so you've gotta have some certified elections training, you know, so there's a, there's a tremendous amount of certifications, not to mention all the, the regular sort of record-keeping and administrative functions for the city. And that's a concern residents have voiced to me in saying, well, you may have somebody that's genuinely interested, and genuinely a good person, has won a popular vote, right? It's a popular vote, but doesn't quite have the skills and aptitude necessary to perform the duties. And at that point, the electorate feels fearful because they'd be stuck with that person, quote unquote, from a resident, until the next election. And that's the reality of the elected selection process, right? I'm elected, and I love being elected, because I believe in that manner of selection, but the position of mayor is a much different position than the city attorney, because it's a much more political position, it sets policies, it sets vision and direction. The officers of the city, of the clerk, the attorney, and formerly the treasurer and other positions, are officer positions, right? There are specific functions required of that position for the city to perform. And so I completely understand the residents' concerns, as they're voiced to me, related to the appointed versus elected selection process, because they very much believe, they're fearful, as clearly other municipalities have been, is the reason for their selection or conversion from elected to appointed over the years, that if you don't have an appointed clerk with the skills and qualifications necessary, that you will not have somebody ably able to provide those, the service to the city. And of course, I'm disconnecting myself one hundred percent from anybody that's held a position in the past. I'm just looking forward, and that's, I think, the conversation needs to continue to look forward. There are a lot of duties that have been outlined in the job description, I look at them, and I think, you know, I don't know if I would be a qualified clerk, I'll just put myself in that. I could run for clerk tomorrow, and I could be the, I, I could not be qualified to do the job, but I could win the popular vote, maybe, and so therefore, you, the city would have me for clerk, and, until the next election. And they would remove me if the council had the courage and said, well, you know what, you probably not performed the duties very well, now I wanna remove you, and then you gotta fight the supermajority and remove you from office, so. I just feel like those are some of the concerns and fears that residents have, have shared with me, and I felt I needed to share them with this body tonight. It's difficult, in the chairman's role in the council meeting, to share those thoughts, and I feel, I appreciate, Terry, the opportunity to share them. Saying about this, it's more comfortable, and, you know, but those are my, those are my thoughts, and I guess that's what the residents have, you know, have, I packaged them together in my comments.
And with, with that being said, anybody else, I think, so that, that was really the reason, I mean, we want, obviously, I wanna get Kurt and his group in here, but item three, we're just gonna talk about for about two seconds, that's just a bullet point I wanna talk about, but next council meeting, this is gonna be on the docket, that I just wanna, you know, have open conversation about, we did it, you guys can certainly reach out to Marshfield, or whoever, check other, the numbers are correct. I mean, I've seen those numbers how many times, and I've even checked them myself, and not that I didn't do them.
I, you know, I didn't expect that, whatever.
So, um.
It's okay.
What, one seventy-six, or fourteen, thirteen?
One seventy-six, thirteen.
Yeah, them, them numbers are right.
So the next common council meeting, we're gonna vote on this updated draft, and?
No.
No.
Unless, if, if you're on the agenda, I, if this one's.
This is what we, this is what we probably found out on.
So, so much of the.
To Tom's point, you know, just, but I just wanted this out, because I always, you know, they, they said it's not a job description, but there really is, I know there is a lot in there, but there's, it's.
Well, this is a revised job description, I mean, it was kind of a Bear Bones job description previously, so it's definitely revised.
Yours is probably six pages long, but.
Yeah, it's two.
It's appointed, so.
Our next meeting.
Well, and I will tell Mike, even though we didn't have a finance meeting tonight, I'm guessing we'll probably have something before the next council meeting.
You will.
Uh, there was something on, yeah, today that came up that I think maybe.
Narcotics detective.
Well, there's that, sure.
Or it will be before that, maybe even, it could be next week even, so just so you know. And then, item three was, um, council member train, I just, I just feel that, you know, we got the elections coming up, so we'll probably hold off, and, but we haven't done any trains since, you know, and I haven't done any since I was elected.